Here in just a second. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out and joining us tonight. Tonight is, this meeting is the August Pender County Planning Board Meeting. My name is Damian Buchanan. I'll be chairing your meeting tonight. I'm going to go through a quick roll call as then we'll kind of get into this meeting, approve an agenda, and get right into it. So I am, I'm not sure if I can turn volume up from right here or not, but I can try to speak more clearly into the mic. These are new mics, so this is better. So as I was saying, this is the August Pender County Planning Board Meeting. My name is Damian Buchanan. I'll be chairing your meeting tonight. We'll go through the roll call, a few comments here, and we'll get right into our agenda. As I said, I'm Damian. I am present. Mr. Satterfield is our vice chairman, and he is not with us tonight. Mr. Jordan?
I'm here.
Mr. Bowden?
Present.
Mr. Pitts?
Present.
Ms. Moska is not here, and neither is Mr. Keeler. So again, thanks for joining us tonight. A few remarks. The Pender County Planning Board is an appointed body, and we serve the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. We have three cases tonight on the agenda to be heard. All are different. But it's important, before we get going, to address a few items that are relevant to this meeting. Now, there is an imposed time limitation for all public hearing comments, which is limited to two minutes individually or five minutes if you're representing a group. Say you're an HOA president, you're representing HOA, that kind of qualifies as a group. The applicants and their representatives are free of time limitations, so they can properly address the board, present their project or their application to us. And our planning director, Mr. Adams, will keep time. Now, please, the comments for, your comments should be limited to those issues concerning whether the rezoning, the text amendment, or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Cases that are heard by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the unified development ordinance. The purpose of the hearing is to gather information so we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, the neighbors, and the community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the unified development ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Certainly mutually agreed upon conditions may be imposed on master plan developments and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Now, before we get going, do any of our board have any, would directly benefit from any type of decision tonight?
No.
No? No. We are going to stand for an invocation by Mr. Jordan and then the pledge of allegiance. All right. We have an agenda before us. As I stated, there's three different cases tonight. One is a master plan development, a rezoning, and a text amendment to our UDO. Now, it's my understanding, Mr. Adams, that the applicant for 8.2, the rezoned, the general business conditional District 1, is requesting a continuance.
Yes, sir. That's, that's correct. The applicant is Representative Mr. Matt Nichols, is here to request a continuance this evening, so I would request that item be moved up to 8.1 so it can be addressed with the board.
Okay. It is general practice by this body as a planning board to allow continuances to, you know, to respect the applicant's desires, to be able to present their project, you know, as they wish. So would you like to come forward and request that, Mr. Nichols, formally?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Matt Nichols. I'm an attorney in Wilmington, and I represent the applicant in Agenda Item 2. And yes, sir, we would respectfully ask for a continuance. We've had, we've had a number of neighborhood meetings and discussions to date, and those, I think, have all been beneficial as this plan has developed. Based upon a discussion I had yesterday with the planning staff, I think additional time would be helpful for us to meet out at the site. And I've spoken with Mr. Brantley about trying to make that arrangement.
Okay.
So we look forward to having that meeting if the board permits. And of course, we would be available to continue to have discussions with neighbors if they would like to have those discussions. But we would look forward to just some additional time. I think it would be beneficial. And then if the board, if it pleases the board, we would come back next month.
That's fine, Ms. Nichols. I appreciate that. I got a little ahead of myself because we need to approve our agenda. But the reason for your continuance, I would like to request that the agenda be adopted, but we move 8.2 to, in front of 8.1 so we can allow that continuance if this body is agreeable.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the change.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries our agenda. This is adopted, so Mr. Nichols, just give us a second, and we'll get right to you here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, we'll move to our July 1 adoption of our meeting minutes. If, I'll entertain a motion unless there's comments about the minutes.
I would make a motion, but I discussed that they...
Gail.
Gail. My name was spelt wrong, or one of the letters was left off of some of the...
The comments.
Some of the, yeah. So anyway, all right, good deal. I make a motion to adopt the minutes from the July 1 meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? We adopt the minutes from July. Okay, in our agenda now, we have a public comment, a public hearing. This is, I'll try to speak clear here. So the next part of our agenda is the public comment. Now, this public comment period is for anyone who's signed up, just to speak generally about Pender County, about planning, about other items related to land use. Daniel, do we have any signups?
Yes, sir. We have two.
Ann Deaton? Ms. Deaton, will you please come up? And when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for us.
Good evening. My name is Ann Deaton. My address is 120 Old Point Road, Hampstead. I have two minutes, right?
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm here to make you aware of something that over, almost 1,000 people have signed. It's a petition. So maybe I might go a little bit over?
Just continue with your comments.
Okay. So there's been a petition that's been going around online for about a month, and there's now, I think, 997 people have signed onto this. The petition is going to be given to the Pender County Board of Commissioners, but it also affects the Pender, you know, your planning board. So we wanted to make you aware of this. So it is about the rampant development that's been going on in Hampstead right now, especially the high, high-density development. And most of the concern is about traffic and safety and how many, do you guys live in Hampstead? Anybody? Okay, so you know that it's almost every day there's a car, a car accident that causes traffic jams, and many of those are injuries, and many people, and people get killed. It's almost impossible to get to work or school on time because you never know what the traffic dilemma will be. And so those were the concerns that most people had, and that it's just really not the community that they moved here for. So the traffic accidents, and then it's always like, well, because the bypass is coming. However, the bypass has been delayed until 2030. So I guess I should probably read this and not ramble. But even once the bypass is done, there's concerns that all the development that's occurring on the side roads is still going to back up. I mean, it can take you 20 minutes to get from Old Point...
Just wrap it up if you can, ma'am.
All right. So I just wanted to let you know that this is the petition, and we wanted to, I'll tell you what it says. "The citizens of Hampstead respectfully request the Pender County Board of Commissioners and the Pender County Planning and Zoning Boards to put in place a temporary ban on permitting new developments immediately, to remain in place until two years after the bypass is fully in use. This includes approval of new plans or increased density via zoning changes until that time." And so we are hoping that we'd make you aware of this, and perhaps you could consider it and even discuss it with the commissioners and endorse it.
Thank you very much for your comments, ma'am.
Would you like a copy?
You can, you're welcome to bring it up here to our clerk.
And also, if there is anybody here that would like to sign the petition, I have the link.
Thank you very much. Michelleene Karen?
Good evening. My name is Michelleene Karen. I'm from 118 Old Point Road here in Hampstead. I wasn't even aware I was signing, so I would be speaking. But the hall is practically empty, so I think we could have five minutes. But my big beef is about the same thing as what Ann was just speaking about. I think we should have developments one at a time instead of all of these big corporations coming in, and they're not putting in like 25, 100 homes at a time. Our own neighborhood is supposed to have up to almost 400 houses on the Piver tract. So this is going to be a big deal, and also with transfer station. So there's a lot to be considered with just that one little neighborhood. And as you can tell with my accent, I'm not from around here to begin with. I'm from Connecticut, but I've never seen anything like this. This is almost like the Wild West. People come in, and they decided they're going to do something, and they just go ahead and do it. And it, it's not taking into consideration the infrastructure. There's one road, 17. That's it. You got to go to the doctor, or you have to go anywhere for an emergency. It's 17. It's very hard to even get to that from Old Point to Country Club to 17. And if you're going there anytime from 6:30 to almost 9 o'clock in the morning, especially if school is in session, it's going to be a big problem. And the same thing with evening traffic. So I think a lot of, a lot of work's got to be done with the infrastructure before all of this development takes place. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments.
That's it for public comment.
All right. Thank you. I just want to address a couple of things there from public comment, just to make sure that, and Daniel, Mr. Adams, you can correct me if I'm wrong. You know, the lady brought up the, this petition regarding a temporary ban. Can you correct me if I'm wrong that the state of North Carolina does not allow municipalities such as Pender County to enforce bans on residential construction?
There are very specific circumstances in which moratorium could be approved. But even if such a moratorium were to be approved, it wouldn't stop projects that are already approved or projects that have a pending application.
Okay. So basically, what a temporary ban would be referred to in our industry is a moratorium. And state law, the state of North Carolina does not allow Pender County or any other municipality to enforce a moratorium on residential or commercial construction unless there is an emergency reason for that, such as being something as a lack of sewer capacity or a public safety issue?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
And if they were to do that, if there was a public safety issue, the municipality such as Pender County would have to have a plan in place to be when they're going to lift that moratorium?
Yes, sir. As I understand the statute, it does say that when a moratorium is issued, there has to be sort of a plan in place, as you described, as to when the issue that is causing the need for the moratorium is going to be addressed.
Okay. Thank you. Traffic kind of falls in the same vein. All, there are no Pender County roads. Pender County is not maintained, does not build roads. All roads in Pender County are either run by a town, like Burgal may have maintenance, they're private, or they're Department of Transportation. And the Department of Transportation is, again, a state entity, and they have control of those roads, and they tell us what we can and cannot do with those roads. So if there's more construction or development that's approved, it is not the planning board, the commissioners, that decide the type of traffic improvements are needed, even though their constituents may be telling them they are. It is the state of North Carolina that tells them what they're, what is done to those roads. And then maybe on a lighter note or happier note, can you give us an update on the bypass, Mr. Adams? I saw something in the Port City Daily about some funding, which is good news.
Yes, sir. I was able to speak with a gentleman with the Department of Transportation today, and just to provide a quick update, so Segment B of the bypass, which is what runs from Highway 210 to 17, which is under construction right now. The anticipated completion date is winter of 2027, subject to change, of course. And then Segment A, which connects military cutoff extension at Highway, at 140 to Highway 210, that is expected to break ground this fall with completion by 2030, again, subject to change. 2030. Yes, sir.
So the good news there is that the state of North Carolina has funded that project, and we're moving forward.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Correct. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We're going to move right into our public hearing, 8.2. We heard from the applicant requesting a continuance. This is a project that's been before us a few times. Is there any comment on that? Are we okay with the continuance? And if so, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to the September meeting?
Yes, sir. I would ask that when the board, when and if that board makes a motion, that we also set a location. The board may consider Hampstead, considering that project is in close proximity to the, to the annex here.
Okay.
And that date is September 3, Wednesday, September 3.
I make a motion to continue rezon 8.2 to the September 3 meeting here in Hampstead.
Second.
Okay. Since I heard no discussion on that, I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed. That carries. That item will be continued to the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. No problem.
Okay. So now we're going to 8.1. Let me just, first, I think there was some signups there. So typically, when we continue a case, we do not have public comment because the case is being continued. But were there any signups?
Yes, sir. There were two signups.
Two signups. So since you came this, all this way, if you would like to come up and have a comment now regarding this case that you signed up for, I'd be open to that.
Dan Ogden?
One concern I have...
Mr. Ogden, thank you for coming up. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Dan Ogden. I live at 363 Twin Oaks Drive.
Thank you, sir.
My concern with this dry stack issue, one, it causes havoc of traffic on Lewis Road. It causes pollution in the water. Now I have, it's come to my attention that the people asking for this rezoning do not believe in obeying by your rules. They've already started the project. Now I understand that they're being hit with $100 a day fine. Plan, or zoning has gone down there, sent the enforcement officers down there. They've already started building the dry stacks without approval. $100 a day, one, one dry stack, they earn $500. So $100 a day is not a problem for them. $100,000 a day would put a substantial stop to what they're doing until they get approvals. We don't want it. We never have wanted it. But breaking the rule and going ahead and doing it without your blessing is flat-out wrong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir. Beth Ogden? Hello, Ms. Ogden.
He summed it up perfectly.
I'm assuming you guys live at the same address?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Go ahead.
He summed it up perfectly. This has been an ongoing issue. The commissioners voted it down, and then they came back again and again and again and again. They don't feel that they need to follow the rules, and I agree with my husband that the fine of $100 a day is nothing for them, considering one slip produces $500 to $600 a month. And they already have two extra dry stacks, two rows of them built, that were not approved. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Okay. 8.1 on our agenda is the master plan, master development plan 2025-83, requests revive the master development plan for Hawksville Cove to remove multifamily units and replace them with single-family units. And is this is a, is a PD project, or is this just a master plan revision project, Mr. Adams?
Yes. Yes, sir. It's a revision to a previously approved master development plan in the Plan Development or PD zoning district.
So this project in entirety has already been improved and entitled?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And when was that approval?
The original approval was December 7th, 2010.
Okay. Many people may say it's been a long time since 2010. And how are they allowed to continue it to this point? I believe there's a logical reason for that, but it'd be good to tell the public why that is.
Yes, sir. On a multi-phase development, when an initial phase is constructed, it allows for the vesting rights of that project. The construction of Transfer Station Road was considered the first phase of this development and therefore it vested this project. And they're able to proceed as that project was presented and approved by the planning board, December 7th, 2010. Now what is before the board this evening is a revision to that approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brantley of the floor.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Okay. New microphone, so bear with me. And they changed that, so I might just kind of be gazing towards you guys. All right, so Ryan Holmes, applicant, is requesting the approval of a master development plan revision for approximately 376 acre development known as Hawksville Cove. Formerly known as St. George's Reach was kind of the initial name of that project. There was a previous approval in 2010 for 1,105 residential units. This included a makeup of single family attached, detached, as well as apartments and condos with a pretty significant commercial element to that as well. We'll get into more detail on what that was specifically. So what they're proposing today is to revise this plan to remove the multifamily units and replace them with single family, which is more consistent with this part of the county in terms of the historical pattern of single family homes. And they're also reducing the overall commercial allowance for the project. And we'll get into those details. So as you can see before you, this is the project boundary off of Country Club Drive between Hideaway Shores and the Belvedere Community. And I've kind of labeled some of those local neighborhoods. You can see Southwater Village is the newer project. Across the way, Carolina Creek and Old Point Estates to the southwest. So moving forward, this is the original or the previous master development plan approval for Hawksville Cove, which was from December 7th, 2010. So again, same project area, 376 acres, 1,105 units. At that time, they were approved for 490 single family homes, which was a makeup of detached and attached single family units. And then they had 615 multifamily units approved, which was 400 apartments and condos and then 215 townhomes. At the time, they, the code had referred to the townhomes as being part of that multifamily allotment. But today's code refers to them as just single family attached units, similar to a duplex. So back then, they were approved for 50,000 square feet of commercial development and 60,000 square feet of civic and recreational development as well. So a very substantial commercial component previously. Any questions on the previous approval at this time? All right, we'll move forward and talk specifically about what is being changed. So first I want to talk about the conditions from that approval and progress which has been made in the area of those conditions. So the first condition was that the development team would incur all costs for the installation of a traffic signal at US 17 and Transfer Station Road per NC DOT requirements. This was completed and installed. The second condition was that a sidewalk trailer multi-use path be constructed to the proposed, proposed at the time, the Community Aquatic Lifestyle Center, which would be that stretch on Transfer Station Road. The board's also familiar with that. So a payment in lieu of $62,500 furnished to the county for the facility to be constructed on the remainder of the road. This has been completed as well. Another ongoing item, connections to Soundview Drive and Scotchbonnet Lane were initially required for interconnectivity. We will go into more detail on that later in this presentation. The next one, pedestrian accommodations along the length of the public access road in the main development portion are to be provided. That is being provided as part of this plan in more detail than was previously approved. This next one talks about affluent disposal areas to be shown. They've, they've had a change in the sewer, I believe. Now they are going with a private provider, Pluris, which will be treating, to my knowledge, treating the wastewater off-site. Where initially, to my understanding, they were going to have spray fields and treatment onsite. But the applicant can speak more to that if the board wishes. On the initial plan, there was a proposal for an inland marina. There was a condition that stated that if, basically if they can't get permitting, state permitting for the inland marina, then they would use it as open space. So they've removed that element from the plan entirely and we'll again talk about that in more detail. The next condition was that the development team would incur all costs associated with relocation of Pender County Transfer Station, which is the physical transfer station site that the county manages, had to be relocated. And so they relocated that on Transfer Station Road. Condition number eight, wastewater treatment may be shown as either an onsite facility or noted as being provided by offsite regional public or private entity. Again, they've modified those arrangements. They're going with an offsite private entity. And then nine, the construction of Transfer Station Road's extension must be fully completed prior to any construction or land disturbing activities of the main development site. This has been completed. And so moving on, the subject properties are Zone PD Plan Development, which you can see on the screen before you, similar to a lot of the surrounding neighborhoods. And just as a reminder to the board and the audience here, master plan approvals are required to be made by the planning board in the Plan Development District. Whereas in the RFP District to the south, it would be a by right approval. That wouldn't have a public hearing opportunity built into the process. So now we're looking at the same plan. For the most part, it's very similar layout. But one of the benefits of this revision is certainly defining more of those allotments in terms of dimensional standards, uses, those sorts of things. So what they're proposing today is the same unit count, but at this time it's 615 single family attached units, which could be duplexes, townhomes, triplexes, those sorts of things. And then 490 single family detached units, which is a standalone single family home. And then again, I mentioned the previous commercial allotment. They are proposing 23,200 square foot of commercial. A pretty substantial reduction in the overall commercial. Which again, to reiterate, the modification in the units is more consistent with this area and the reduction in the commercial will, in my opinion, be a better fit with the surrounding area. So we'll talk a little bit about project density. As you can see before you is calculations that inform how we reach the net density, potential wetland acreage, open space requirements, non-residential acreage for the, you know, the commercial component, right of way acreage that is presumed to be removed from the project when those roads are constructed. So the net density is 3.5 dwelling units an acre with a gross density of slightly under three dwelling units an acre. So the net again takes out all of the essentially unbuildable areas and then you factor what's left. But the gross is looking at the overall density, how many units per acre for this project? And again, this project is around 376 acres with a gross density of 2.94 acres or dwelling units per acre. So just to emphasize the future lane use map designation, I'll again get into a little more detail later with this. But there's two categories for this site. One is low density residential, which is two dwelling units an acre. And then the other portion is coastal residential, which is three dwelling units an acre or less. So with the gross density of 2.94, they're within that range. And so I'm going to, I won't spend too much time on this, but again, one of the benefits of this application is to define those dimensional standards, which from what I could tell previously weren't as defined as they should have been historically. So we'll just kind of go through the unit types. And the board can stop me at any time if they have questions about specific dimensional standards. So this is a lot typical for a townhome project, zero lot line. They're, they're going to have a front load type with front parking. They're going to have a rear load type with rear parking. Those two types are specified in the plan. We have single family detached. This will be your typical single family detached within the neighborhood. 5,000 square foot minimum lot size with, with pretty standard setbacks. Then we're going to have a look at the standard duplex lot, 33,000 or 3,300 square foot lots there. This is the dimensional standards for the standard single family home. And so one thing about this project, I'll take a step back. So there's different colors around the project. So those are basically different place types, if you will, that will consist of different types of units. So the plan goes into more detail about which units go where. Some areas you're going to see more consistency of attached, some single family detached. I want to bring your attention to the areas around the perimeter, the most extreme parts of the project to the south as well to the north. That would come across as a kind of medium pink-ish color. They're all kind of shades of pink, but let's take a look at the top part of the project, that color. So that's referred to as the edge. And so that edge will consist solely of single, the lower density, single family residents around the perimeter of the project, where they're going to have the higher density units as far as the townhome concentrations within the center of the project. To be more compatible with those adjacent neighborhoods on the outskirts of the project. So moving back along, as you can see here, you know, 12,000 square foot lot for that edge type unit on the outside boundaries or the outer boundaries of the project. Again, which is more consistent with the surrounding area than what would be found in the interior of this project. And then we have, we don't have a typical because they haven't designed the commercial yet, but this is a pretty standard allotment for commercial lots, which will be developed later on within the project's life. Buffers, this may be of interest to a lot of folks. There's different buffer types, an A buffer along the road frontage, which is typical of any project. And then a C buffer along all other boundaries, which is required in PD, the PD district when a project is adjacent to a residential district or residential property. The C buffer means there will be complete 100% opaque buffer. This could be through a fence or a hedge. So typically the C buffer can be a minimum of 10 feet. But one thing that was part of the previous plan was that, and they've maintained it here, is that they've elected to have a deeper C-type buffer than the ordinance requires. So the same screening and planting requirement, but they would have more of a depth. So along the northern and southern property perimeter, they're going to have a 30-foot depth, which is elective, right? They've chosen to do that, to enhance those boundaries and better preserve the vegetation within those boundaries. And then at the northeastern corner perimeter, a 60-foot elective depth there. And then this is more specific detail on what those types would consist of. But where you see the elective depth, it would be deeper than the ordinance would provide typically. And then so moving forward, we're going to talk a little bit about open space. So a residential project is typically required to provide 0.03 acres of open space per residential unit. So based on the number of units in this project, they're providing over 33 acres of open space, half of which is required to be active open space. And then there's a thing called recreation units, which based on the number of units in a project, it establishes a minimum amount of, of investment they have to make into those active amenities. It's, it kind of caps out the way the ordinance is written at $100,000 of investment. I imagine and assume they're going to far exceed that with the investment they're bringing to this project. And we'll talk about some of those elements right here. So this is on the left-hand side, you can see the overall master plan. And then I've kind of enhanced an area in the center of the project, which shows a 10-acre amenity site with walking trails that connect it to the streets. We'll talk a little bit more about the broader pedestrian infrastructure of the project. The main road that you see in yellow will have a, a multi-use path along the entirety of that road on one side, and then all other streets of the neighborhood, not including alleyways, will have sidewalks. So as you can see, the amenity site, there's some dotted lines, not the phasing line, but the other dotted lines that connect back to those streets through different open space and greenway areas. And you can also see a pocket park concept over there to the, to the left of the screen to the, to the west. So again, a centrally located amenity site, and they have some pocket parks and other allotments for open space throughout the neighborhood. But this will kind of be the centralized neighborhood amenity, again, with a lot of pedestrian infrastructure to allow people to safely enjoy a walk or a bicycle ride to get to that amenity site. And so proposed uses, we'll talk a little bit about the commercial element. I won't belabor the point and list or read all of these, but again, the typical types of uses that would complement a neighborhood kind of community, right? Full-service restaurants, clothing stores, retail, more kind of neighborhood store types of retail, fitness, recreation, sports centers, so that a gym could go in there. You have drinking places, personal care services, hair salon, nail salons, you know, those sorts of things, a childcare center. You know, there's just a lot of variety there. These are all uses that are permitted within the Plan Development District and are being proposed as potential uses for this, for this area of the project.
Mr. Brantley, are any of the uses being proposed as part of this master plan uses that this body has, you know, restricted in other cases such as tobacco shops, something like that?
Not in the context of a plan development.
Okay.
But there was concern about a vape, a vaping shop with a previous case that was a conditional rezoning. But to my knowledge, that's not something within these categories.
Okay.
If that answers your question, Mr. Chairman. So again, just neighborhood type of businesses that, no, no large scale types of uses, but a good variety of mixes for folks. So folks can, can go shopping or get those services done without going on 17, right? Which is a benefit to this part of the county. And there's also some approval for some commercial, a potential for commercial growth on Country Club in this area as well. And so talk about traffic a little bit, very sore subject. I understand it's a sore subject to me as well. They did have a traffic study done around 2010 or so that is considered valid by the Department of Transfer Station. But be mindful that they constructed the Transfer Station Road extension. They've effectively connected Country Club and 17 with Transfer Station Road, which is a very critical part of the transfer station infrastructure. But we talked about the, the reduction in the commercial allotment. So if you take that into consideration, you see a pretty substantial reduction overall. The project is proposing to generate around 10,000 trips per day. Previously it was around 12,000. Still, these are great numbers, but it's important to emphasize that they are reducing that traffic burden by around 2,000 trips per day due to the reduction in that commercial allocation. So I think there is some, some value to that. As you can see here, there wasn't quite clear traffic information for this particular segment. But as you can see, there are some capacity issues with Country Club Drive. As everyone knows, we don't need to look at the numbers on the screen to know that. But the idea here is that a lot of the folks on, within this project are going to be able to get right across to Transfer Station and out to that bypass and out of town to Raleigh, Wilmington, those more long-distance destinations. That's the idea. And so we'll talk a little bit more about connectivity here. So they're proposing six points of access for the project, one of which is an internal access to an existing roadway that they're going to be working with those property owners on to kind of re-establish their access. That's a Vila. So just to point out a few, there's three connections to Country Club Drive that they're proposing. The primary entrance is going to be the one across from Transfer Station Road, directly aligned with Transfer Station. And then you also see a connection to Scotchbonnet Way to the south, which was part of that previous approval. And then a connection to Soundview Drive, which is a state road, which is part of the Belvedere Community to the north. And so to move forward, we'll talk a little bit about, again, that public, as far as the public right of way and then the pedestrian infrastructure in the neighborhood. So again, the Collector Road will be designated as a public access. And they've also agreed to extend that public access to connect to Soundview. So while the connector isn't going to exactly connect to Soundview, you'll be able to go beyond the connector onto a more local type of street to get to Soundview so that folks from even Belvedere can travel through the main corridor of this neighborhood to get to Country Club, because that will be granted.
So that dark dotted line, that's public all the way, correct?
Right. So the plan is that will be, it will be privately maintained, but they will be offering- but they will be offering and dedicating a, and they volunteered to do this, but they will be dedicating a, a public access easement to that, to essentially connect two state roads. But they've chosen to pursue that from a private maintenance perspective. And then, all the orange streets that you see are all gonna have sidewalks. And so, very, very pedestrian-friendly community. And so, we talked a little bit about this briefly. So, here's a map that illustrates those, the kind of split designation in terms of the future land use plan. The Coastal Residential towards the water, kind of the second half towards the water, is designates around three dwelling units an acre or less. And then the low-density towards Country Club, two dwelling units an acre or less. Again, the overall gross density is within that range. And so, we'll talk now about conditions of approval. Obviously, some time has passed from the initial conditions. There's been some rewrite, some revisions to these, which, which I'll go through now. I'll, I'll focus on the ones that are being rewritten, because we've already covered the ones that will remain. And I've noted which ones have been completed, as was previously discussed. So, connection three, connections to Soundview Drive and Scotchbonnet Lane required for interconnectivity. So, from a planning staff perspective, these are invaluable connections to increase connectivity in this area. So, Leatherback Lane, which is kind of the working title of the Collector Road, will be designed and installed as a private collector's street with an eight-foot multi-use path along one side of the street and a fifty-foot right-of-way. An easement will be provided to allow for public access from Leatherback Lane to Soundview Drive. A stub connection to Scotchbonnet Way will be provided to allow for a potential future connection. The inclusion of a barricade at the stub will be coordinated based on local and fire marshal requirements. The barricade shall be removed upon connection. Number four, pedestrian accommodations along the public access road, like I mentioned. So, the, the way this has been reframed is that Leatherback Lane is designed as a collector's street to include an eight-foot multi-use path along one side of the street. And so, then five, which has been addressed, the rest have been addressed. And then, number ten, I wanna bring to the board's attention. So, the way the previous approval was established, the, all of the allotments for the units kinda have like a plus or minus. So, five hundred attached, five hundred detached, plus or minus, right? So, there could be some flexibility with the market conditions as that project is developed. So, they've requested to have a ten percent fluctuation between the allotment of attached and detached, single-family units. So, just to be clear, the, the, the number of units is not changing. This does not allow them to change the number of units. It allows some flexibility with those market conditions in the future. However, staff has suggested this, and the applicant has agreed to this, that we will not allow any modification in those unit types within the, within that edge designation, which is around the perimeter of the project. So, under no circumstance would they be able to, all of a sudden, want to do townhomes adjacent to those existing communities. They would still maintain that lower-density residential unit type. And so, those are the conditions that the applicant has agreed to and that staff is recommending approval based on. So, again, this proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. It's gonna bring a lot of great connectivity and potentially commercial resources to the community. It's important also emphasize the work that the developer had done previously on those essential infrastructure components, such as Transfer Station Road. And then there's the following policies that support that. And again, I wanna say it's, this is an important project to kind of revisit, because we're able to define those dimensional standards so that there's clarity on what folks can expect, more clarity than was provided previously, moving forward.
Thank you very much. Can you go back to the original plan that was approved?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, just to be clear, so the audience understands this and those watching home, this project here that's on the screen is approved. And if the, the developer, the landowner wanted to move forward in this condition, they could.
That's correct.
Okay. So, what we're talking about here tonight is simply an approval of a revision to their plan, which you've just described.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
I have one question, and I'll let the, the other board members ask some questions about commercial. You had stated that there was more, a substantial reduction in the new plan. How much was there on this original plan?
Fifty thousand square foot of commercial, and then they had an additional sixty thousand of civic and recreational. So, on pre, on older plans that I've seen with this project, they had proposed like community centers. I think churches were even considered as part of that as well.
So, on this map, what has been removed from commercial?
Well, the acreage hasn't changed, to my knowledge, the acreage of the commercial area.
The allocation on the map, I believe it's probably close to the, like, the waterfront there on Soundview. Looks like it's purple, is that the commercial?
Well, the commercial allotment was, well, they were gonna have Inland Marina, but that's changed. But the commercial focus was gonna be up front, where you see the, the VL. It's a little difficult to make out.
It's that darker purple, I believe.
It's the darker, the hatched one, so the, the commercial, you see where the roundabout is closest to, to Country Club? That's gonna be, or that was initially the commercial area, which is still the focus of the commercial area.
So, can you tell me again, the reduction, the amount of square footers that was reduced?
So, the initial approval was for fifty thousand square foot of commercial and sixty thousand square foot of civic and recreational space. So, they've removed the sixty thousand square foot of civic and recreational space, and then they've reduced the fifty thousand to twenty-three thousand and two hundred square feet.
Is that something that was just in the ordinance that allowed them that path forward? Is that something that staff discussed with them and allowed that reduction?
There wasn't much discussion, they just chose to reduce the commercial allotment. I mean, fifty thousand is, is kind of a pretty substantial amount of commercial. It may have made sense then, but in terms of the direction they wanna go with the community, they wanted to have something a little more compatible with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Justin, I had a question. On the Greenway Trail, how does that tie into this? Because I'm not seeing it represented on here.
Oh, the Greenway Trail? Well, yeah, just to, I think we're, let me say a couple of things on that. So, the East Coast Greenway, which may be what you're referring to, they did a feasibility study for Country Club Drive. And so, that's part of this larger proposed state interstate network of trails, right? The East Coast Greenway. But part of that goes through Country Club Drive. And so, we actually received a grant for design, right? An eighty percent grant, and then we also got another grant for a matching grant. So, we're in the process of pursuing those funds. We've been awarded those, but it's a matter of project management kicking that off. But we have received funds ultimately to do the design of a multi-use path on Country Club Drive that connects Kiwanis Park. There's an existing multi-use path there that would connect that multi-use path with the schools at the other end of Country Club Drive. So, it's about four-mile stretch. Ideally, we would get the design, better understand the cost, and then petition, seek grant funding, state funding for the installation of that over time.
It, it was my understanding that, that it was on that side of the road where they were planning for it. Is that?
Daniel, I'm not exactly sure what side was designated, if, if it had gotten that specific.
I don't know that a side has been designated that'll be part of the design. I'm sure, and I may be speculating here, but I'm sure that'll, during the design, they'll consider costs. And one side may be more expensive than the other. I imagine that'll be something as part of the design.
Okay. If there was an easement, is it, are we asking for an easement along Country Club for a multi-use path?
No, sir, the, the desire would be for it to be within the right-of-way.
For the multi-use path?
Yes, sir. Along Country Club.
Yes, sir.
And right now, given this project, we have setbacks off of Country Club of how much? So, before commercial is built in the one piece there, and then?
I mean, a pretty substantial, I mean, they're not proposing anything near Country Club Drive. You can see they've kinda put in those, like, more passive open space. Well, this is the previous plan, so no point really talking about that. But you can see the, the commercial kinda does get closer. But generally, you're gonna have, like, if, if homes, let's look at the, the top left of the screen.
The only reason I'm asking is that's, like, pretty much one of the biggest stretches of land to accommodate that path.
Right.
Probably easier than going across somebody's front lawn.
Right.
And, you know, my understanding is that path goes, will connect all the way to, to Kiwanis Park. And then from Kiwanis Park, does it go on from there through Holly Shelter or something? I can't, I can't remember, but.
Well, the, the, what we've got the grant for, for the design would be from Kiwanis Park to basically the Topsail Schools.
Okay.
Across Seventeen. But I do believe the East Coast Greenway actually continues. It would be east on Sleet Point Loop, if I'm remembering correctly.
And that connects to, like, the Mountain to Sea Trail or something?
That's right, yes, sir.
Which is kinda cool, you know, I mean, even for the developer to, you know, have that path there and
Right.
get access to Kiwanis and.
And one thing, you know, just, just having this great, the pedestrian infrastructure within the project, and then the publicly-designated multi-use path, I think folks are really gonna enjoy this over time. And eventually, that network, the broader network will be constructed, and it'll just increase the overall pedestrian experience and health of the community.
That, that was, I've got two questions, so that was my first. The, the second is, I've heard from the DOT that they wanna put a light at Transfer Station Road. And I'm not sure if you guys have heard, heard that, but I've heard that kinda through the grapevine.
I've not heard, oh, sorry, Jeff.
But if, you know, I, I don't like lights, because especially there, people blow through them and it's accidents. If it was a roundabout, and I know that, and I remember from their previous plan, and it looks like even with this plan, they've got some traffic circles. I think it's just a much nicer design. I think it reduces accidents. And I'd just like to put that out there, that if, you know, there is a light involved there, I think we should also look at a traffic circle option, which I think also would be a lot more aesthetically, you know, pleasing, instead of having, like, a traffic, like, kind of off of Seventeen. We don't have too many of those in Hampstead, but just wanted to bring your attention to that.
Yeah, and I'm not aware of any discussion about a traffic light. Not that it hasn't been discussed, but I'm not aware of any clarity on what exactly those improvements are gonna look like. But the applicant may be able to speak to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Does the applicant have a presentation?
They do not have a presentation, but they are present and able to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Well, if they'd like to come speak at this time, they're welcome to. If not, just let us know, we'll get moved to public comment. Okay. Craig Prou.
Good evening, sir. And again, when you come to Mike, uh, Mike, state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Craig Prou, and I live on Sawgrass Road, right off of, right off of Country Club. And I just wanna talk about the traffic just for a moment with the, the two very large developments that have been, you know, talked about for, for the last, you know, a couple of months. That is the Peaver Track and also this Hawksbill Cove off of Country Club. I don't know if you guys live, you know, to tell me, but I don't know if you live, you know, here in Hampstead, but I sent you guys a very nice letter about a couple of months ago, and I, I sent it to you and the commissioners, and just asking about, you know, what are you guys gonna do about this traffic? I, I did not hear back from, from anybody, except for one commissioner did get back to me and was very, was very sympathetic. But when you got, you know, Hawksbill with, you know, three hundred units, and then you've got a Peaver Track right next to it with over three hundred and sixty-two units, I mean, you're estimating, I'm estimating, you know, that on a, a weekday, a morning, like a Monday through Friday, when you're trying to get out onto Country Club, that's the only access you're gonna have, you're talking about eight hundred to nine hundred cars on, on Country Club trying to get out to Seventeen. Now, it's been talked about, yeah, you can get out through Transfer Station, that leaves, but they're not going to Jacksonville, mostly, they're going to Wilmington. So, they're, they're heading, heading the way, they're gonna go down there. I sent you guys a picture. I live on Sawgrass, I took a picture at Sawgrass. I live a mile away from Seventeen. This is what it looks like. It's backed up over a mile right now. When you put that many units of cars, eight hundred, nine hundred cars on a Monday through Friday morning going out, I'll finish.
Just continue.
When you have that many cars, you know, trying to get out on Country Club to Seventeen, and a few being diverted to, to, to transfer, it's gonna, it's gonna create a real nightmare, a worse nightmare than it is right now. I don't know if you've, if you've, Monday through Friday, if any of you guys have, have ever ventured to come over here and take a look at the traffic trying to get out. You can't get out, like King's Landing, Sawgrass, all those roads trying to get out. And it's backed up on, even on my street, Sawgrass, you'll back up five or six cars trying to get out onto Country Club to get off onto Seventeen. To get just to Seventeen, it takes me probably thirty minutes, you know, in the morning on a, on a, on a Monday through Fri- Thirty minutes right now. What's it going to do when these two uni-, when these two developments get done and you got now seven, eight, nine hundred cars being added to it?
Thank you, sir.
In the morning.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris Scullion.
Hi, I'm Chris Scullion, One-O-Three Inlet Court. I'm on the HOA Board for Highway Shores. I wanna thank the board for your time today. We also wanna thank the board for being accessible during this process. We're a small community, about a hundred and fifteen lots. We are working with our friends over at Belvedere HOA to kinda go through the process with everybody and make sure that we have our needs heard. The one to start with is basically, I'm not sure if you've been to Highway Shores, but it's a very small community to the south of this project. For forty-three years, Highway Shores has been a quiet retreat where people can walk, kids can ride bikes, and watch the, the day pier to fish. We have five acres of common ground for just a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen lots. We have one entrance, one exit. Around that common area, we have a, a asphalt path. The people from King's Landing comes down, walks on, jogs on. We have a lot of people coming from other neighborhoods to go through our property, because especially now, as we're hearing, this is the quiet part of that area. Yeah, walking on King's Landing or Country Club is impossible. So, people come down to our place because it is a quiet neighborhood and it's walkable, dog-walking. Our community values the freedom we have to have a walkable, low-traffic, and quiet neighborhood. This adds value to our properties, and now with the increasing traffic, it is more important than ever. We do not wanna be connected to Hawksbill Cove. It's our identity, Highway Shores. We're still trying to hide. We understand that, you know, this is progress and things have to happen. I hear, and, and we have access to Ryan Homes too, by the way, and they've been also accessible. We appreciate that also, and that's been great for us.
Continue, sir. Continue.
Thank you. We've heard that one of the requirements for Ryan Homes was to connect to Scotchbonnet Way, which is our main high, our drag, our main street. It's actually private up to that point. We have talked to Ryan Homes, and I think the gentleman before us, or the, the attorney before us, was saying that they're gonna stop at this point during this revision, short of connecting to Scotchbonnet. I'd just like to, the time here to, for our, for our folks to make the point to the board is that we really don't wanna have, to be connected. We don't have emergency vehicles coming through. We don't know if it's a code issue, we don't know if it's someone else's emergency vehicle issue. But that would transform our property into a thruway. It's not who we are. That's not how we get value of our houses. We have a lot of common areas, we have a day, a day pier, we have kids everywhere, dog-walking everywhere. It would change the nature of who we are. If there's any way that that could be avoided, we would appreciate it. A question we would have is, if Scotchbonnet- A question we would have is, if Scotch Bonnet wasn't there, would you make Hawksville Cove add a road at that point of the property? Or is only because we have a road that is going to connect to it? The second point we have is, um, we believe that that stretch of Scotch Bonnet Way is a private road. We're pretty sure of that, actually, and we're not sure if that changes the reflection of the board in connecting to it or not. But in every case, uh, I want to thank you for your time. Uh, we have the same concerns as traffic as everybody else does, you've heard that a thousand times. Uh, Belvedere HOA, uh, Christian will talk about the same concerns we have about water drainage, for example. Uh, but I just want to take a moment here and, 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 and talk about this small community that's the south of this big development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christian Kleinfelter.
Uh, good evening. My name is Christian Kleinfelter. I'm the president of the Belvedere Property Owners Association. Uh, I want to thank Daniel Adams, oh, he's leaving soon. He's been very professional, very supportive, very helpful. Uh, and I want to thank, um, NVR Inc., the parent of Ryan Homes, that they've been very open to developing with us a, um, professional, neighborly, cooperative, uh, and proactive relationship, and we want that to continue. But we know this is going to happen, but we're not trying to be obfuscational at all. We're trying to work with them cooperatively to ensure that both our interests, uh, are mutually addressed. Justin Brantley asked me to just speak tonight to ask the county to be helpful in a few years when this becomes, um, appropriate in the normal cycle of engineering planning, that we address South Belvedere Drives for culverts that take the flow of stormwater, uh, surface runoff from this property to the north, uh, and into Nixon Creek. Specifically, this, uh, southern, southeasterly most is where, um, the lake on the golf course, uh, the culvert there is only about this big, and you'll see on the map, originally they had a retention pond, they had some wetlands, oop, paved over when they went to eleven oh five, no problem. But when we get to Phase Three and Four's engineering and their submittals that go through the county, because stormwater runoff is a county responsibility, I need your help and theirs to get that assessment done so we can look at the adequacy of that tiny culvert. So before Florence, we had the second culvert in Belvedere washout, thirty feet wide, fifteen feet deep, took our water and power with it when it went. Right after Florence, during Michael Country Club, uh, blew out, taking the power and water with it, about thirty-five feet wide and about fifteen feet deep. Um, this is preventable with good engineering. So we just asked the county's assistance, because you're the first step before I can ask NC DOT to look at the adequacy of the size of that culvert to take the stormwater flows coming off that big lake that they got planned, because that has to be where all that extra paving puts the water, has to go into that facility. Does that make sense? That's all I'm asking. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jerry McCaskill.
I think most of my questions has already been answered, I believe. We're not in real big favor of, uh, extra cars that we already got.
Sir, do you mind stating your name and address for us?
Angus McCaskill.
And your ad-
Fourteen forty-sixth Country Club Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Hampstead. But, uh, when I moved down here in nineteen seventy-four, you could get around pretty easy. There wasn't no traffic. I used to raise up and look, see who was coming down the highway. And now it's got some bad, it sounded like a freight train out there sometimes. But I was just wondering how far, what's the capacity of a highway like Country Club, you know, it's, uh, I think they said something about six thousand cars. We've run, we've reached that, two thousand and ten. It's over thirteen thousand probably now during the day. I'm just, you know, getting, trying to get out on the road, you know, at eight, eight o'clock in the morning, when I ain't got nothing else to do, I like to just sit in the traffic and just watch it go by. That's about it.
Thank you, sir. Sidney Brock.
Hello, um, I, my name is Sidney Brock. I live at one oh one Soundview, sorry, ninety-nine Soundview Drive, um, Belvedere, and I am thirteen years old. Um, I would like to bring to your attention the historic background of the Hawksville Cove property. This area is, um, is a part of a farmstead dating back to seventeen twenty-eight. As most farmsteads and plantations during this time period, people were buried where they lived and worked. This included enslaved individuals who graves, whose graves are virtually unmarked. In nineteen eighty-two, the area was surveyed for the National Registry of Historic Places. The survey found four grave sites, two marked with headstones that contain the burial sites of the owners of the plantation. Two were suspected and unmarked, but believed to belong to the enslaved individuals who lived and worked on the plantation. I don't believe that the, um, previously released plan of Hawks, Hawksville Cove took, um, took these sites into consideration. Um, the unmarked burial site should be treated with equal amount of respect as the marked sites. I would like to know what your intentions are with these sites. Do you plan to investigate them and determine if they are, are in fact burial sites? Or leave these possible graves to be lost by time and cement? These individuals are greatly disrespected during their life. Do you wish to continue to disrespect them during their death? I here have a sketch map of the, um, property, uh, that has the, um, Nixon graveyards and the, um, suspected, uh, slave burials. Here, if you want that copy, um, building over this would be such a shame. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to bring up those maps here? No more signups. Okay. Thank you very much. Those, that was, uh, some good feedback, and we'll do our best to address them. Does the, uh, board have a, an objection to miss?
Thank you. Um, my name is Beth Butler. I live at Coots Trail, um, Coots Trail, right off of Country Club. And, um, I just want to ask a couple of questions. Um, I know Daniel, I've, with Country Club Design and on what's to come with Country Club. And I know I've heard you say many times, it's an old country road that wasn't meant to be what it is now with developing and the amount of traffic that we're going to continue to have. My concern is hearing about the wastewater being, um, hauled off the pre- not, um, off of the premise of the property. I mean, how is that going to be possible for a development this size? Um, and then I'm also, the question that I guess that I have is, I'm under the interpretation with Transfer Station Road, when the bypass opens, it's, where is Transfer Station, I, I was under the interpretation, they're going, it's going to be closed down for exit. Yeah, what is the design with that? Because, um, i- is that correct? I'm, I mean, I'm asking a-
We can get to your, the answer to those. Just finish your comments as far as your questions, and we will get the, get answers to you. I'm writing them down.
And then, um, the other, um, thing, of course, is the traffic on Country Club is insane. Um, and again, it's a, you know, a semi-circular road that ends up back on Highway seventeen. And we already have a public safety issue. We had an older man, gentleman, a couple of weeks ago, get hit in his golf cart trying to cross the road on Country Club. It's insane. Kids are riding their bikes to Sheets, and, and we love the Sheets. Um, we've got a mess right there with Carolina water. People are turning into Old Point, into driveways. Um, and it's a mess. So, you know, we know that this has already developed, but we're just asking for help, solutions, public safety issues that we've got. Um, and that's where, you know, why we're here pleading with you all. Um, but again, I'm concerned about the wastewater, you know, issue being hauled away. So that's the question I have, and then also the Transfer Station, how?
We'll get you answers to those. I think I got answers for you, and we'll get some other answers for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Brantley, come back to the podium and probably going to ask, uh, members of the applicant's team to come down here as well. So any of those engineers over there might want to come down to the front row. Um, I heard great feedback and several comments, uh, one we don't hear very often, but several that we hear quite commonly. I think the first question regarding, I'm just going to go through them. It's, it's basically traffic, uh, you know, and there's some specifics regarding interconnectivity, Scotch Bonnet, uh, the capacity of vehicles and so forth. Uh, and then also the future of Transfer Station Road. I will again reiterate that Pender County has no roads. There's no Pender County roads. Uh, we do not maintain roads. The state of North Carolina maintains roads, and they have complete jurisdiction. And county government is an extension of state government, and their one big rule is do not usurp our authority. So state roads are state issues. So there's a very limited amount of things that we can do as remedies to address, um, the road issues and the traffic issues. It seems to be, and you guys could probably agree, that there's a lot of times the DOT will put certain types of improvements in there, and they're just not good enough, because once the traffic gets built up, they don't respond until it gets really bad. Uh, but that just seems to be the system that we're living in here with state roads. As far as interconnectivity, uh, I don't know, uh, the history of Hideaway Shores, as much as you probably do, but I'm assuming, and as you can tell me, that when that plat map was recorded and developed, that there was a stub out there for future expansion on that plat map. Is that correct? Do we know that answer? And that's why it's connecting to this road?
It's unclear.
Okay.
It's unclear based on the recorded plat.
Okay.
The, as you can see, where Sand Dollar meets Scotch Bonnet Way, it's kind of a right angle.
Mm-hmm.
If you continue down Scotch Bonnet Way, it, not too far after where the, the information box kind of makes it white, it does become state maintained, DOT maintained. Then you go out to Trans- or King's Landing. Uh, but it is unclear on the plat. It is also unclear what was exactly discussed about that connection back when this was approved.
But this plat was approved in twenty-ten with that connection in place?
Right.
Okay.
It was a requirement, a condition of that initial approval.
Okay.
From a planning perspective, yes, it, it is, the idea would be that we're interconnecting all of these communities to create better, safer outcomes. Like if there were an accident on a road that would isolate a part of a roadway, you could have an access, an alternative way to get in and out of a community. There's benefit to-
Direct access, there's no, not a gate here. There's going to be complete access to the property?
Excuse me?
There's no gate? There's no locked gate for emergency purposes? This is going to be a open access through Scotch Bonnet?
Well, there, so Scotch Bonnet is not authorizing the connection that, um, the developer is bringing. So what the developer is doing to abide by that initial, um, condition is to provide connectivity up essentially to the property line. When Scotch Bonnet chooses and Hideaway Shores chooses, if they choose in the future, they can make that connection. If they ever need to, it will be ready for them.
Okay. So that's a civil issue then, outside of this?
Yes, sir.
And you, that is meeting the conditions of this development?
We can't, now Scotch Bonnet Way was established before, you know, we had a lot of these standards. Uh, can't exactly say when that was platted. I think it was in the, in the seventies, right? Which before we had zoning regulations, before we had subdivision regulations. And so if that were platted today, then we, we would have considered future connectivity a future stub. But we can't dictate that this developer can use Scotch Bonnet Way, right? But we can provide a connection to the property line for future connectivity.
Okay.
If Highway Shores were willing to make that connection.
I think you went over capacity of vehicles on Country Club Road already. I just want to point that back out. That was brought up.
Yes, sir. Here's that data provided earlier.
So our current volume that we're using from a study in twenty-twenty-five? Or no, when was the study? Twenty-
So you can see the original trip counts and then the updated, so they've updated the TIA information, um, with, based on the current uses or the reduction in, well, first of all, the reallocation of the residential unit types and the reduction of commercial. And you can see before you the difference, there's a difference between those numbers, the negative two thousand, so a two thousand and ninety-three reduction in daily trips. But also to note, these aren't precise numbers, these are estimations. Also, there is a consideration for what's called internal trip captures, which would mean people from within the neighborhood going to other parts of the neighborhood, right? So people that live in this neighborhood could go to the commercial element without ever getting on Country Club Drive, right? And back home.
I expect people from different neighborhoods to drive through here to get onto that Transfer Station Road.
Absolutely. And they'd be able to with that public access.
Okay. And then finishing up traffic, uh, the future of Transfer Station Road?
So I cannot speak for DOT, um, but my understanding is that Transfer Station Road, basically if you left this project site and went towards Transfer Station Road to seventeen, you wouldn't be able to go right into, right to the bypass. There would be a service road, and Daniel can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there's going to be a service road that would then go northbound. And then traffic will be able to come back down, take essentially like a U-turn type turn back down towards-
A smart street.
That is my understanding, yes, sir. But it, my knowledge, it's a service road that will go northbound and then come back to get to the actual bypass.
Okay.
That is my understanding of that proposed infrastructure.
Do they have improvements that would be doing that, would be a light there with a U-turn light like they have in Leland?
I cannot say, sir.
I know the applicant has a traffic engineer here who may be better suited to answer these questions.
Will you help enlighten us, sir?
I'll, um, I'll help, but that was pretty good, so. Um, Ronald Stevenson with DRMP. And that is my understanding of the, the design of that as well, is there would be a connection point from Transfer Station Road to seventeen that you could still use Transfer Station Road to access the bypass and seventeen. But it would not be a necessarily a direct, direct connection. I, I would, I, I don't know for sure if there would be a traffic signal there at the U-turn. I would guess there probably would be, though, and, and sometimes, um, I don't know if they've identified that at this point. They probably have an idea if they would, if they were, if that would be a signal. But that's something that's probably either been looked at or will be, um, you know, as it moves forward. But I would expect there to probably to be a, a traffic light there, a traffic signal.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, had you heard anything about a traffic light at Country Club in Transfer?
I have not. I have not heard anything about that. I- if that's been discussed, I'm not aware of it.
While we have you up here, do you want to elaborate on any of the things we've talked about as far as, uh, your, your traffic plan? Uh, and maybe drill down, you know, you've heard me mention now a couple of times that DOT really controls this process, and we have very little input on that, uh, other than wanting connectivity and so forth. Can you explain that process a little bit and what to expect and how you, uh, how that decision is made and what is put in place?
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, I, when, when the original traffic study and master plan was approved, um, you, uh, you can tell as you, as you heard in the presentation, that one, the very first thing that was required was to basically, uh, construct Transfer Station Road. And I, and I think that was, that was done intentionally by the department, uh, to provide another point of access to seventeen for this area before any of the traffic is generated from this particular development. So, you know, the fact that our driveway lines up with Transfer Station Road, I think is also not a, not just a coincidence. Uh, that is to allow traffic from this neighborhood to be able to use Transfer Station Road, um, to access seventeen. But, uh, I, I think another thing from just a timeline standpoint that may be worth, that may be worth kind of pointing out is that, uh, we've covered the, the current projections or schedule for completion of the bypass. And, uh, you know, that completion schedule i- is actually going to line up pretty nicely as this development builds out. Um, I, I think we're, and, and, uh, Michael or somebody can touch on this if we need to, but I think the, the, you know, the first house is probably still a few year, couple of years away at least and, or more. And so, uh, so I think that's one thing to keep in mind. If we get approval on this, we're not going to have traffic being generated, uh, from this property for still several years. And, uh, that is actually going to match up pretty nicely with completion of the bypass, so. to match up pretty nicely with completion of the bypass. So there, you know, I'm, I'm not expecting there to be significant impacts on Country Club Road from this development because the Transfer Station Road is complete, we line up with it, and the bypass is going to be, certainly the first leg of it will be done and probably the second leg of it before we have really significant traffic, you know, coming from here. So I think that's going to line up pretty, pretty nicely.
Has DOT already determined or approved the types of improvements that they will require?
For, yeah, for this project, I think it was covered, I think it was covered pretty well, but there are, the primary, the big improvements were the traffic signal at Transfer Station in 17, the completion of Transfer Station Road. There are some other turn lanes at these driveways that obviously have not been built yet and would be built when the driveway connections are made. But other than that, the improvements that were required as part of the original traffic study, original master plan have been done.
What about on Country Club itself and connectivity with the project?
With our project, this project? Well, there, there are still some turn lanes that are going to be constructed at the driveway locations, when those driveway locations are actually constructed. So there are some additional improvements coming along Country Club, but they'll, they'll be done when the driveway connections are made. And DOT will, will at that, at that time have to issue a driveway permit and review the plan. So DOT is still going to, to be involved to, just to make sure those improvements are done.
Mr. Bellwin referenced a roundabout or a concept of roundabout or a traffic light. I'm assuming a project this size, DOT is going to require you to do something at the intersection of your main entrance at Transfer Station and Country Club. Do you have anything you can share with us about what you anticipate that to be? Are you open-minded to a roundabout?
I think the, I think the issue with that particular improvement would be right-of-way that a roundabout would require for, you know, a roundabout within the neighborhood is, is lower speeds, lower volume, lower traffic volumes. A roundabout on Country Club there would, in my opinion, would have to be a pretty substantial size to, to accommodate the traffic and let everything move, keep moving like you would anticipate it. You would want it to, you would want it to, to move. So I, I think there would be some serious challenges with the roundabout there. Traffic signal would be more, I think, more likely than a roundabout there. But that is going, that, again, that is something that as you, as you all mentioned earlier, that DOT does control these roadways and DOT can look at that and say, we think a traffic signal is needed here as traffic builds out or is added to the roads. And if, if that's the case, either they will install one or they will ask us to install one if they feel like it's, it's needed there.
Thank you.
But I think the signal is more likely than a roundabout.
Any other traffic-related questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was a big one. Stormwater was another question. Now, Dan, Mr. Adams and Justin, tell me, correct me if I'm wrong, there are certain standards that are applied to these projects in our ordinance. And if the applicant meets those standards, they've met the standards. Now, some of those require runoff requirements or minimizing runoff. Is the Pender County standards for stormwater the same as NCDQ? Is it tougher? Is it, can you give us a little explanation there?
We regulate, well, let me put it to you this way. So the state is more concerned in terms of regulating water quality, right? The quality of water leaving a project. Whereas the local regulation like Pender County's is more focused on the quantity leaving the site. So with both, I mean, ideally you would have both approaches to stormwater management. We do have a pre and post-development runoff because obviously there's going to be pre, there's going to be runoff that exists prior to a project. And then there's an allotment, you can't increase the pre-development as far as pre versus post-development runoff by more than 10%. And so one of the benefits to having recently contracted over the past year and a half or so with a stormwater consultant is that we now have a stormwater consultant working by our sides to review the projects from that technical perspective.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman from Belvidere had some specific, you know, I believe, given his knowledge of this, that he expressed his concerns in detail with staff and with the applicant. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Do we, or is there any rub in that, his request and what is actually going to be done, you know, from a standpoint on how to address those concerns that he had?
Well, you know, as far as a technical opinion on that, you know, I don't have one as I'm not a stormwater engineer. We talked conceptually about the concerns he had, but it's certainly something the county would be willing to have our stormwater consultant look at once those plans are submitted as part of their review.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a stormwater professional here to address that at all?
Hi, Saul Moore with Withers Ravinal. Yes, so two things to, to the question. Anything leaving this side, we are required to mitigate that as, you know, anything coming on site. We are, as part of our design, we do look at the watershed, not just our site. So we do look at any offsite that is coming to us and how to divert that or go through our, the treatment that we're proposing on site to be able to meet what leaves the site. So we look at everything that comes into the site, all the runoff coming into the site, and then how to process and detain, slow down, detain, and process that. And before it leaves the site, we need to meet those requirements to like not exceed what the pre-existing conditions show.
Okay. Have all the issues that, I mean, I'm sure this gentleman has expressed his concerns about some of the culverts and so forth. Do you believe that your plan will adequately address those issues? And is there an avenue for him to discuss further or how does that-
Oh, absolutely. I think if you can, yes. So, yes, any concerns, and actually, the public input meeting was very helpful. There were those little nuggets that were provided, you know, showing us area or pointing at areas that we, we needed to look at. So we have identified those areas and we're, we're looking at that. As far as the culverts, if they are, if we're directly impacting those, we will look at those. If they're, you know, if we are discharging into those culverts, we will, it will be part of our analysis. We, we want to make sure that that culvert has the capacity to do so.
If you find that the culvert offsite would not meet the demand of your system, how do you remedy that? Do you improve that culvert or do you try to redirect your runoff to different locations?
We do. We try to redirect that, that runoff as much as possible. But if we are meeting the conditions, you know, local and state conditions of what or how much is leaving our site, and then it's a culvert out, you know, outside our, our development and it's DOT maintained or county maintained, then we have that conversation. We would typically not, you know, do any improvements to private or public culverts maintained by DOT unless like we specifically impacted, like we can't meet one of the storm requirements.
So at what point in time do you identify the capacity of those offsites culverts?
We, well, during the design, we definitely look at that, at what we're, what point of analysis we have, what we're discharging.
Okay. And so the public understands, and so the community of Belvidere, which he is the president of HOA, understands their concern, which are, which are valid. But sometimes it's just making sure that they accept the fact that these are valid concerns and this is how we're going to deal with them. That's not just an approval and I didn't get to have a voice in this process. This is part of that process, but there's, it goes along further than that. So at one point in time, would the Belvidere community be able to sit down with you guys and say, okay, these are your connections. We've identified these at this. You agree with that? Yes. This is what we're doing to mitigate that. At what point in this process should they be looking towards to that next time?
Yes. So some of that, the design specifically for the South Village, that's already public information. It is going through review through the county and the state. So that is out there for anybody that wants to obtain a copy and review. And then any, I mean, you do have like information. So, yes. So once we submit to the county, once we make that next submittal, it will be also available.
Will those decisions be made in the TRC review process? Or they may be made with your engineer process with the Department of DEQ for your stormwater permit?
It's both. Yeah. We, we have to go through both reviews.
Okay.
So it will be comments from them and also from DOT Hydraulics as well.
Mr. Adams, would it be wise to encourage anyone who has technical issues like this, specifically to attend the TRC review meeting?
Yes, sir. Folks are certainly welcome to attend. I'll just clarify that the TRC is not an opportunity for the public to comment as in this forum here today. It's a, as the name implies, a technical review, discussion of the project among folks who regulate development and the developer.
So if you wanted to follow along and know what's going on with those specific standards that you're talking about, you would have to attend that meeting. I'm sure the planning staff will be happy to keep you informed of that. Again, though, you go to that meeting, there's no comment. You sit in the corner and you can listen. You sure talk to people afterwards, but there's, during that process, you know, mum's the word. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
And, and just as a reminder to the group, so, once the master development plan is approved, the next steps, the subsequent steps would be a preliminary plat submittal, which will be the engineering plans. So we require them to provide mailers for everyone within 500 feet. So we will continue to notify everyone, every property owner within 500 feet of the project throughout its life. So I just wanted to emphasize that. So we would be mailing folks essentially all around the project boundary.
Thank you.
Particularly the, you know, so if they're concerned, then they'll know that's the time to reach out to the county and try to coordinate with the applicant, the developer as, in the TRC review process.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions regarding stormwater? Working my way through here. I'm going to save the young lady's request till last because it's unique but important. But an easier one is wastewater. We talked about that. It looked to me that the previous plan had some type of on-site treatment plant that was going to take care of, of spray fields and, and, you know, in a state-approved manner. But because Pluris, which is down in Scotts Hill off, what road is that? Syd Berry Road, has capacity and most of Hampstead that's on sewer, that wastewater is sent all the way down through pump stations, down Syd Berry Road or back behind that road to a state, and they have a huge spray field. It doesn't smell. It smells more like earth, but that's where they spray sewer. So what is being proposed here is instead of having an on-site treatment plant, which is not, most people don't want that in their neighborhood, even though it's, you know, perfectly fine, but most people just don't have like, want to be around that. They're going to pump it down to the, the Scotts Hill plant for Pluris. So it's, that's the process there. Do you have anything you want to add on that?
No, sir. And you can see on the original plan, in the center of the project, there's a wastewater effluent disposal area, subject to final permitting. So again, they've, they've changed that method.
They'll have to put the pump stations in, probably get to 17, and then Pluris takes it from there.
Right.
Okay.
Which all, again, we're, just to be clear, which all has to be approved by the state-
Right.
DEQ.
Right. Historic grave sites. This is not a new topic. In fact, I want to say three, four years ago, there was a developer that may have intruded on some grave sites and it became a very big topic in the community. And it's important to us as far as our culture and history. The young lady brought us a map with some identified areas. Can you elaborate what staff is understanding of grave sites in the area, how that is, I guess, viewed from a governmental standpoint, and then how a developer would go forward if grave sites were found or that process?
So there are certain, certainly state and federal protections for these sorts of resources, archaeological sites of the sort. It would be part of the, kind of the due diligence of the applicant, the developer, in terms of studying the site and investigating. Because if there's unmarked graves, then that's just simply not something the county would have a clear record of. There may be some historical records tying back to any given property, but it's a matter of how to navigate those historical records. That would be the responsibility of the applicant to explore and understand the land that they are choosing to develop. As part of the technical review committee process, we do send it to a lot of different state agencies, ones that would be involved or would raise concerns about those potential conflicts.
When did you do, when, when in this process would you do that?
Part of the technical review committee.
Okay.
We have a very vast list of contacts on that committee list.
And that process, the technical review committee, is going to start pretty soon if this is approved, this is an approved project, but if this revision is approved, that's the next step is the technical review process after they get all their professional work done?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not the end, it's the beginning?
And I have spoken about the potential out here for, for those sorts of sites with the applicant. It's something they're aware of and are looking into.
Would the applicant come and address this issue and how you're going to approach it?
Yeah. So we are aware of the marked graves of what we're calling in the central northern part of the property. So those are identified and we're providing those buffers. We will have to work with the state historical preservation office as well, once we get into the future design of the project to, you know, create buffers or identify, try to identify historical areas on the project.
So your surveyor would be notified or has knowledge, most of them do, of where these marked areas are?
That's right.
And so that's something that's a little bit easier to identify because it's marked. What about the unmarked or unknown graves that you may come across or are not marked? Do you do any pre-work? Like, I don't, there was a map passed around. I don't know where that was identified from in the study behind it. But if, when you were to get something like that, how does that be, how would that be addressed if they're unmarked or not recognized by state or federal?
I mean, we would have to get a consultant involved and navigate that at that time. But again, part of this TRC is going through the, the state historical preservation office, which would likely have national-registered, previously national-registered houses or properties and try to either avoid those areas, leave them in open space. It's really going to be completely at the discretion of the consultant and the state at that time.
I'm going to provide this hand-drawn map to staff to give to you. You have it?
Yep, I know. Yep.
You're aware of it?
Yes, sir.
So there is a process that you're going to go through to address that?
Yes, sir.
This is, it's something very important to this community. And so we would appreciate some diligence towards the historic sites and unmarked graves of the ancestors that lived in our community.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate that.
Yep.
I think that's everything I had written down from public comment to-
I had one other question for the stormwater person from Withers. How's it going? So I'm looking at the project map. There is, before your main entrance, it looks like, I don't know if you own that piece of land, there's like another piece of land that comes to Country Club. And there's a drain pipe on the other side of that. I don't know if we can bring that. Where's the project map? So right here. Is this part of your land, that little jet out? There's a pipe here that all this water on the other side of Country Club drains and it goes out to what are some ponds back there? And I, I don't know if those ponds represented or them, or you're going to reorganize the ponds. But is this piece of land part of the project's land?
It is part of the property.
It is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the issue with that is there's a double pipe, actually. I don't know if it's represented there, but there's a double pipe that comes from the other side of the road and it flows down in that little piece of land to a single pipe. It really needs to be a double pipe to a double pipe because a lot of the flooding during storms that happens on Country Club is a result of that. And I don't know why, I think the DOT may have put that single pipe in at some point, or maybe the property owner at the time did that. But I would, I would add as an approval item, if I could, that, that needs to be looked at in it. And I think it needs to go double pipe to double pipe because what's happening is a large volume of water is coming from the other side of Country Club and then it backs up because it's going to a single pipe. And then it floods all down that side of the road.
Yeah. We'll go back. We are already under design for that area. And I do know that anytime we do any improvements to the DOT right-of-way, they do ask us to look at if pipes need- need to be extended or improved.
Would the applicant be willing to, to take that on, to make that a double pipe? So, I mean, it's a simple engineering thing, right? You have two giant pipes going to one smaller pipe. It's gonna back, the water's gonna back up. And it does every time.
It does make sense, but one thing that we definitely need to look at is like, are the, you know, that we would need to look at, is like the existing pipes, even the double pipes, with the drainage area coming to it, are they sized adequately?
There are 48-inch pipes. There's two corrugated metal 48-inch pipe, and it's going to like, I wanna say a 42, single. And it, it's just a bad, really bad design. So I would, if I could, I would request that we could add that as an approval item, or certainly, if I made a motion, I would add that. Because it's a big issue for all of the people on that side of the road. Wouldn't take a lot either, because you're already there doing site work.
Yes, and that's part of it, because we do analyze what's coming onto our site or into our site, so that would be part of the drainage area.
But I don't know how that goes, because right now, that water runs there, right? So there isn't an intention to block that up, is there?
For that area?
No.
No.
Okay. I mean, I would assume that the DOT has some sort of easement there. Are you guys aware that there's an easement there?
I will have to look. I'm not aware of an easement there, but if DOT, if it's a DOT maintained pipe, they probably do.
Okay. I would just, I would make that part of my approval, just so you guys know.
It seems that you're in agreement from what he's explaining, is something that you would want to address. But I'm sure you're hesitant, because you're not exactly sure of what's in the ground at the moment. So is there something that you would be willing to agree to that would make you feel comfortable with what he's requesting, from a standpoint of a continuation of piping that is consistent with what's existing from off-site, you know? Something that you're saying, we would agree to that, we can't get specific, because we're not sure what we're agreeing to, but is there something more broad that is kind of, you'd be comfortable with?
And I, and I mean, I think we're talking about adding one piece of pipe on the other side of the road, so it doesn't get backed up. Because with all this development, it's still, and I know you're gonna move your stormwater to the ponds, as you should, to your storm ponds. But I know how things go during projects. There's little runoff areas that nobody ever intended, and it ends up getting in the ditches along the streets of Country Club, and there already is an issue there. So I know this is a huge issue. I know that that backup has caused flooding multiple times on that whole side of the road. All the way, even covering over where transfer station is. It covers over that a little bit, and it even goes a little further down the road in a really bad storm, and it floods out into Carrie Bruton's big piece of property there as well. And then it goes all the way back the other way, going towards like King's Landing. So all of those houses, that whole side of the road, because of that one pipe, it all floods. And I've been out there in storms, I've looked at it, I've evaluated it.
No, no, I.
And I just, and I just see it happen, it's like, that's the problem, right there.
Yeah, I believe it definitely. If you have two, you know, 48s coming into a 42, that would happen. I think part of the analysis would be making sure that the two 48s are adequate. Sometimes you have two 48s, because that's what was available at the time.
Two 48s are adequate. I, you probably don't want to be digging up Country Club Road there if you don't have to. I just think, it's, it's not, it's the 48s go under the pavement, and then it goes over to right here. So all this, it starts here, there's two, there's two 48s, and then it goes to a single here. This is where you need two pipes.
What's the PIN number of that property? I'll look it up real quick.
I don't know, but I'm assuming.
I was, I was just referring to that, and it may be, considering when properties are subdivided, the PIN changes, it may be better to reference a map or a deed.
But that is part of their property, right? That little piece, that's part of the, well, the subject property, okay.
So.
So is there something that the applicant developer would agree to, to address that, to put that second piece of pipe in there? And it, and it might be even upgrading from that 42 to two more 48s, but?
Yeah, we're, we're in agreement to investigate and remedy that situation, you know, if it's two 48s or two 48s, if that is what the engineering calls for, we will do that. If it's, if it's a larger, it could swell, just whatever those remedies are, we're.
So some, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm just, I'm kinda concerned that it's going to be putting more water on the proposed development. You're bringing water from outside into the development, and I'm sure you probably did your calculations with the 42-inch pipe coming on there. Is this something that we can do by asking them, Mr. Adams? It's going there now. Well, I mean, I understand, but I mean, requiring them to do that, is that, is that something that we can, we can do as a board?
Yes, they have to be voluntarily accepted.
Okay.
Which it seems like they're willing to listen.
They're, they're willing to look.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you put a condition in there, and I'm throwing this out there, that however we identify this property, that the stormwater pipe, piping off of Country Club Road at this identified area would be analyzed and, you know, a remedy to make sure that the flow that is not, has no, will not back up, given design standards or something like that, or would be continuous, I don't know how you phrase that.
I mean, it's, we could do the engineering analysis, but I've done the analysis, I've been standing out there in the middle of a hurricane, I've seen what happens with that pipe. And I know that there's that, your piece of land, there's another, I think it's like seven acres down the road that's under contract. They're gonna be doing a bunch of little patio homes there. So it's only gonna add more stress to all those ditches. And I've traced it, I've been, the storm ponds have helped, that, that LGI has done, that has helped a little bit. When McAdams Homes does their stuff next to us, they're gonna have storm ponds, I'm sure that will help a little bit, but it's still an issue. And.
This has come up in other hearings, in other projects. So you seem like you're open to something. We like to have some type of agreement. So if we were to say that the developer were, will, you know, take into account and review the double 48s, or the piping coming off Country Club Road at this section of the property, and will do, what would you be willing to agree to that would probably, in your world, satisfy our concern?
If I could be more specific, I would just say, I would make an amendment to the approval conditions, if you would accept it, and say, two 48-inch pipes to match the two 48s that are already coming under Country Club. You're not digging up any pavement, you're not doing anything, it's just, you're adding the pipe, two pipes where that single pipe is.
Mr. Bowden, I'm reluctant to establish a condition of approval that is a specific engineering technique. I understand that you have a very familiar understanding of the drainage out here, and we have heard about the specific system in the past with other projects. But it seems unreasonable to have them agree to a specific technique without the time to analyze the project. I would like to pose the idea of having them consider, to do an evaluation of that system, and consider making modifications to their plans to address it. But I think it's, I'm reluctant to have them agree to a specific.
I've had discussions with the DOT prior.
Yes, sir.
And we both looked at it, I had him out there, and he said, two 48-inch pipes.
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, I'm voting no. That's just where I'm at.
Understood.
Yep.
The other thing I would like to add, it's like, when we, when we design, when we look at that pipe, if the pipe needs to be, the hesitation comes from like, we're not sure, we haven't looked at it yet, at the analysis. So we gotta make sure that the 48s are also adequate, because we cannot seal something that knowingly going into, like, it's not adequate for the drainage coming to that area. So we would have to analyze that, and we would probably, we would be in contact with DOT, so whatever information they have available.
I mean, I'd be willing to reword it and say that the pipe on the other side of Country Club can take the same volume that's coming under the road.
That's, that's what I was gonna, like, what's the purpose, is to keep the volume going?
Same volume. It's gotta be the consistent volume to where, I guess, I'm guessing it's gonna land maybe in here?
I assume so.
Right. If that were, if that were to block up in any way, by the way, when you are doing your, your land improvements, that will be catastrophic for everybody. That, people will have floodwater up inside their house if it's a bad storm. That's how much volume gets, I've seen trees this big around, come, get sucked in and break in half and go in that pipe. So, just to, you know, let you know. We would have to take precautions to make sure that that water's always flowing. Yep. So you'd be amenable to a condition, an additional condition, that you will add whatever piping is necessary to transport the same volume that's going under Country Club and continue its path to the storm pond?
Continue the conveyance.
Yes, I would say a conveyance system, not necessarily a pipe. It could be alleviated, maybe with a swell, reinforced swell. So the, again, the means and the methods on, on going in there, yeah, I think.
I mean, it's going between two houses. I mean, you probably, you might be able to do a swell, but I'm assuming that, if you own that piece of land, I guess you can do whatever you want on it, right? So, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was getting back to. So this condition would need to be to address the stormwater pipes, specifically for double 48s coming off of Country Club, and that the developer would analyze and develop a system that would transport the same amount of.
Same volume.
Conveyance.
Convey the same volume of water.
Capacity into their stormwater project. Something along those lines?
You good with that? You wanna read it back one more time?
Okay. Who's writing this down? Go ahead, Mr. Adams.
Rather than identify the property by a parcel number, I would suggest referencing a deed book. So I took a swing at this while, while everyone was speaking. How about this? The drainage connection at Country Club and the project site location for the parcel identified in deed book 3136, page 140, which is where that stub connects, convey the same volume of water that passes under Country Club Drive.
At high-storm events or anything like that, or just, does that cover all that?
During any.
To the engineer. During any storm?
Yeah, during any event.
Yes, typically, we do analyze at least the 10 to 25 and the 100.
So 100-year event?
That would be.
Got that, Daniel?
For the 100-year event, up to and including the 100-year event.
Seems stringent, but I think you're gonna have a nicer project that's gonna make the community happy. This has been something that's come up many times over the years. Any other?
What is, what is your standard event for your calc, for your stormwater calculations?
The 10-year and the 25.
So 10-year and the 25 is your standard?
10 in the pipe and 25 in the box, yes.
What was our, what was our most recent hurricane? Like, what, what's a typical hurricane? A bad hurricane, is that a 100-year event, or is that a 500-year event?
Depends if it sits, like, we had Helene last, last year, it could be a 1,000-year event. So it just, it depends, but.
But the storm events that you're calculating on, are those based on 2010 requirements by the county?
The county's code, I believe, references NOAA Atlas precipitation data. So again, I'll defer to the technical expert on how those rainfall events are calculated.
But it seems that most of the developments coming for us are being calculated for the 50 or 100, or with a, or looking at 100-year events?
For conditional rezonings, that's generally a condition that we add.
And why is that?
Additional measure of something that the community has expressed a desire as an issue in the county, stormwater retention.
Is that a major added cost to you, to analyze for the 100, or to develop to the 50?
The 100 is typical, including, the 50 is uncommon on some areas. So that, being that we are already almost at approval with the South Village part of it, that would definitely require rework and redesign if needed.
That's the ordinance.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Just again, I'm opening up for a discussion here, close the public comment. The, again, this project has been approved. What we are looking at tonight to approve or deny is the revision from what they had previously to today, which is a reduction from the 60,000 civic space, the 50,000 to 23 commercial space, and a change of apartment complexes into townhomes and single-family homes to be more compatible, duplexes as well. Is that correct, Mr. Brantley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. We've discussed a outside condition. Again, this is a administrative process, this is not like a rezoning. This is an administrative to check the boxes. If we're good with what they're doing, to say, have you done everything we need you to do? And those conditions, as you saw, were voluntary, which was appreciated by the applicant. So that being said, is there any other conversation that we would like to have about this case? Since I'm hearing none, I'll look at a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve with the additional agreed-upon condition? I'm sure I should.
I think you just need to read the first approval, and then can reference the rewritten, the, the previous and rewritten amendments, and then, or the conditions, and.
That's correct. You can just reference, you know, conditions as proposed by staff and add it in, and I'd be happy to read this condition again for the record, if that's how you'd like to proceed, Mr. Adams.
So make a motion to approve based on the conditions put forward by staff in the additional.
And the additional condition reads, "The drainage connection at Country Club and the project site location for the parcel identified in deed book 3136, page 140, convey the same volume of water that passes under Country Club Drive, up to and including the 100-year event."
Is that good with our plan consistency statement? Is that maybe read, or we're good? Okay.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? This is an administrative review, this is, this is approved here, it does not go forward, it is approved. So any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, we have a, the motion to approve is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right to our last case, is a zoning text amendment.
One moment, please.
Proposed text amendment to reassign the decision-making authority for determinations of vested rights and interpretations of zoning district boundary lines. Ms. Waters, welcome. Trying to, there's so many slides. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. We let the audience clear out there. Appreciate everyone coming out. Now, we have a very small audience, and Ms. Waters, you have the floor.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This presentation is for a proposed text amendment. The Pender County Planning and Community Development Department is requesting approval of a zoning text amendment to the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. Specifically, the request is to amend Article 2.4.2 Powers and Duties of the Board of Adjustment and Article 2.5.2 Powers and Duties of the Unified Development Ordinance Administrator to remove determination of vested rights and interpretation of zoning lines and zoning district boundary lines as a final action of the Board of Adjustment and assign this duty to the Unified Development Ordinance Administrator. The intention of this text amendment is to streamline the process for applicants, staff, and the Board of Adjustment. This will help increase efficiency and minimize redundancies. And I do wanna point out that this does not preclude the applicant from appealing the decision to the Board of Adjustment. This is just reassigning this authority to the Unified Development Ordinance Administrator. So, the UDO text to be amended would be under 2.4.2 Powers and Duties of the Board of Adjustment, determination of vested rights, and in concert with the administrator or signee, interpret zoning lines and zoning district boundary lines, and moving these under 2.5.2 Powers and Duties of the Unified Development Ordinance Administrator. This is consistent with one policy in the comprehensive plan. So, Policy 5.1.G Development Review reads, "The county supports an efficient, transparent, and predictable development review and approval procedure." And with that, staff is recommending approval of this zoning text amendment. It is consistent with the spirit and intent of the UDO. It is supported by one policy in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and again, streamlines processes and approves efficiency. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Waters, can you just again reiterate that this text amendment is removing what from the Board of Adjustment and giving it to staff?
Determination of vested rights and...
What would be a determination of vested rights? Can you give us an example?
That is a great question. I would defer to Mr. Adams to answer that. He might be better able to answer that question.
Sure. So, for example, if a development was approved by the Board of Commissioners years ago, and someone was interested in purchasing that project, and many years had passed, they would reach out to staff and say, is this, are the rights of this project still vested? Meaning, can this project move forward? For example, the, the case that was just discussed was vested. So, a determination of whether or not that project still has development rights based on the initial approval.
Okay, thank you. And the other one was?
In concert with the administrator or signee, interpret zoning lines and zoning district boundary lines.
And that would be just where exactly that PD line, you know, connects with that RP zoning?
Yes, and...
So, the map would show that, but you guys, when it gets to the nitty-gritty, would have to say, no, it jogs like this a little bit?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay, now, if the, this occurs, and they were saying, well, I think I have more commercial land than residential, and it matters to me for whatever reason, and they disagree with you, they still have the process to go to the Board of Adjustment. Now, currently, they will go straight to the Board of Adjustment. You would not get a say, you guys would just disagree, and we're going to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. All right. I will say that I spoke with a member of the Board of Adjustment, and they were in support of this text amendment. Any further questions for staff? Any concerns, questions? I've not heard anything, so it sounds like we're in agreement. So, Mr. Jordan, would you like to make a motion to approve this text amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning text amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance purpo, purpose and intent, and advances the public health, safety, and/or welfare, and is consistent with one policy and two recommended actions in the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Policy 5.1.G Development Review.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have not heard any discussions, so I'll call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Waters.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir, next meeting date, September 3rd in Hampstead, as the board has already determined.
But you will not be with us, because tonight is your last night in public, I guess. Maybe there's another meeting, but you're done this week.
That's right, yes, sir.
So, how many years have you served Pender County?
Six years.
Six years, wow. Thank you very much for your service.
You've been one of our best directors.
That is one of the longer records. Starting off, what, in floodplain management?
Yes, sir, that's right.
And were you here, I guess Florence, was that? That was just after Florence?
Yes, sir, just after.
So, you came into a whole lot of interest and intrigue in your department.
It's, it's...
Did you get that Beaver ordinance passed?
That's right. I'll always be remembered by that. But it's been a wonderful opportunity to, to work with a growing community and a lot of great folks in that community.
Well, you've done an excellent job. Like I have told you in the past, you're always very polished and professional, and I think the public will appreciate it, we appreciate it, and I know the commissioners do. And you'll be missed greatly. Good luck in your next endeavor.
Thank you.
Not too far away.
That's right.
Who's our interim?
Effective Thursday, Justin Brantley is the interim director.
Congratulations, Justin.
Please direct all concerns to Justin.
Okay. Next meeting is in Hampstead, we adjust that in the agenda, so at 7:00 in Hampstead. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.